I will now call to order this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is the Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023 meeting. I will ask our city clerk to start things off by calling the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey? Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Okay. Mark said he might be a few minutes late getting on.
Ernest Cade?
But he'll resume. You always call his name?
I do.
Oh, I never noticed, sorry.
Make sure he's here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, we're at item four, comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, they set aside this time and on each agenda and, uh, ask that you, if you have comments to make, that you go to the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments tonight brief and realize that the council won't take action tonight on anything that you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Got a second? Motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for both A and B.
Okay, we got a motion to second for six A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Carry seven zero.
All right, and we're at item seven, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a rezoning request for 1.6 acres located at 3324 Arkansas Highway 112. Planning Commission review this rezoning request recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-density single-family residential district SF1 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Council, anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Go ahead, keep calling.
Powell?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
And as usual, the emergency clauses are included because of pending actions on these properties. The next request is for, uh, .5 acres located at 1015 Sherry Street. The request is to rezone from, uh, single-family, low, medium-density single-family residential district SF2 to low, medium-density multifamily residential district MF2. Planning Commission review this request and recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density single-family residential district SF2 to low-density multifamily residential district MF2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions, council? Anyone in the room?
Is that a build like a duplex, I guess?
Yes, MF2 allows duplexes, same density, but just duplexes.
You didn't get any pushback at planning?
No, and it was unanimous vote.
Okay. Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus? Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item is a replat that goes along with that rezoning that we just did. It replats lot 18 and 19 and part of lot 17 of the Hager, Harker's addition. Planning Commission review this replat recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads and ordinance accepting the replat of Harker addition lots 18 and 19 and part of lot 17 to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council? Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus? Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item is a request to rezone .99 acres located at 2815 North 56th Street. Request is to rezone the property from low, medium-density single-family residential district SF2 to neighborhood office district O1. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request, title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density single-family residential district SF2 to neighborhood office district O1 and declaring an emergency.
Patsy, does O1 mean that the neighbors are notified?
Yeah, and it was by a six to one vote, yeah.
What the?
All the neighbors are always notified.
Why would, why would you want to, why would we want to rezone this to office?
Well, this is the, an area where there is a roundabout to be put on 56th Street at County Line Road, and they want to operate an office in that residential structure there, at that location, and O1 is used as a buffer between commercial areas and residential areas, and this is a request, the, it can't be anything but an office. You can't store anything outside. You can't do anything like that. Can't be any larger than 5,000 square feet, and it has the look of an office. The only thing that will be different is they will have paved parking that goes along with O1.
So they are going to pave the gravel?
They'll have to pave for parking to meet the minimum requirements for the sizes of the structure that they have there, yes.
How's this fit with the land use?
The land use plan shows residential use for all that area. When you put a, uh, roundabout, it changes it a little bit, but this doesn't allow it to go to a major commercial activity at all. It just allows it to have a little bit higher use than just a residential and allows for an office to be at that location.
I toured this last week, and it's a very nice facility. They, they've gone in and redone it, and it's, it really looks nice over there.
And the, the resident's next door is going away as part of the project. So that house will be gone.
Yes.
For the four?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Is there anybody in the audience here on this one?
I'll, yeah, I'll check. Does anybody want to speak to this one? Okay.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am. Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item is a request to rezone .8 acres located at 3819 South Powell Street to rezone the property from A1 to SF1. Planning Commission review this request and recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-density single-family residential district SF1 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room need to speak to this one?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
Hi, Mark, um, can you or Louis or somebody let us know when Fugierus is going to be joining late? Just let us know when he's on so Denise will know to start calling him, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Patsy, sorry.
The next request is a .1 acre tract located at 602 North Old Missouri Road. The request is to rezone the property from SF2 to C2. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request, the title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density single-family residential district SF2 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
Is it all, it's all SF2 around except for across the street, I guess?
Uh, the property just to the north of it is already C2.
That's C2, the pink?
Yeah. The land use plan shows it to be commercial along there, too.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Any pushback or not, Patsy?
No.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next request is to rezone 3.29 acres located at 4890 Horn Lane. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, the title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Patsy, I got one quick question, and I think I know the answer to it, but I guess that's going to remain Horn Lane until that portion of Don Tyson is improved? Or does it?
Well...
Since it's not technically a parkway?
Right. Technically, it's not part of the parkway, and it is, it hasn't changed anyway up to this point.
All right, okay.
It might get with Clayton and see if we do need to change it, but that's the way it's been.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless they ask to be changed, we might as well wait until we do the road sometime.
Well, if, if the commercial development is on that corner, they would have to do street improvements on that portion of it, so that might be the time when we change it, when that...
As long as that's not a problem for first responders or something, like, I guess it's just one house and...
There's a couple of houses on there that's on Horn Lane.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
On the north side, where it's not part of the street yet.
I asked the same question on this one. I mean, everything out there residential, right? This would, other than the school, which place the residential?
This has been a commercial business since it was annexed into the city.
Location right now is a commercial business?
It's had a landscaping business on it for a long time. Uh, I don't...
So they were grandfathered in as a...
They were, they were, right. They were grandfathered in as a commercial use of the location. There is some discussion in the Planning Commission about opening up some neighborhood commercial in areas around there. If you go out to Willie George Park, there's nothing out there. You're out in the middle of nowhere. There's no place to get gas. There's no place to get something to drink. You've got to come all the way back to 265 or all the way back to 412. Creating some neighborhood commercial in that area might help address some of that area out in there across from the school. Well, there's a big drainage to the east of this that, that, that's what part has to be done on Don Tyson Parkway is put that big drainage, uh, structure in under Don Tyson Parkway. The drainage will be addressed when we do a large-scale development for that property.
So just because there was, somebody got their grandfather in there, they may be selling, they may have already sold, whatever. And it's not necessarily going to remain as a landscaping business.
That's correct, and as you've heard me say before, anything you consider to be the worst case that can happen in C2, then that would be acceptable at that area. What it can't be is it can't be a car lot. It can't be a, anything that has a drive-through. It can't be any of those kind of things. It's more of a, it's one step above a neighborhood commercial in that it allows, it could have a small commercial strip on there that has, uh, you know, like a coffee shop in it without a, without a drive-through. You could have a dry cleaners. It could have neighborhood services in it as a C2. Um, because it has, because Casey's has pumps probably not in a C2, they'd have to rezone it to C5 to get to it, like Casey's.
Were there any neighbors there in this one?
There were, no, and it was a unanimous... Oh, wait, wait, wait. I already switched to the next one. Hold on. Yes, it was unanimous, too.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Carry six one.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next request is for 16 acres located at 4258 South 56th Street. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to MF24. Planning Commission review this request and recommends approval of the title of the ordinance reads and ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to high-density multifamily residential district MF24 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Have a motion to approve the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room need to address this? Any questions? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item is a request for a conditional use for Use Unit 42, which is a church to be located at 86, 866 South 48th Street. This is the after-school program. Uh, they are requesting a church at this location. Planning Commission review this request, recommends approval of the conditional use with the condition that their hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sunday only. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Hope City Church at 866 South 48th Street as set forth in ordinance number 4030 with the condition that their hours of operation are from 8:00 to 1:00 on Sunday only.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Carry eight zero.
I can say that's probably the first time in a long time we've had a church that had enough parking, that we didn't have to worry about the parking, so they went into that location. The next request is a replat of lots one and four, block three, and part of the west half of block two in Putman Edition. This is just off of Huntsville. Planning Commission review this replat recommends approval of title of the ordinance reads and ordinance accepting the replat of lots one and four, block three, and part of the west half of block two in Putman Edition, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions? Council?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a waiver request for a sidewalk in connection with a single-family home being built at 3567 Julio Road. Uh, Planning Commission recommends approve, payment in lieu of improvements to Julio Road in connection with 3567 Julio Road, a single-family dwelling with estimated cost to be submitted by the developer's engineer for confirmation by the Planning Commission. Title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Hugo Rodriguez Constello and Maria Eugenia Torres Martinez in connection with 3567 Julio Road, a single-family dwelling.
So we still got drainage problems out there? Julio Road?
Um, probably. I don't know. We haven't done anything to it. Uh, that's why the Planning Commission was recommending payment in lieu of, at the recommendation of the ci, of the city engineer. I mean, this is, uh, connected to the school. We would do this when road improvements are done, but the developer would pay into the city, and that money would be transferred to that project when the entire road project is done.
Particularly drainage wrecks or you... I, I've heard, I've heard about the outflow from the, the tension pond on the school property. Is that it, or is there other drainage issues?
I think it's more to the east of this property, though, than this one. I think it is.
Okay.
I made a motion that the resolution pass with option three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution with option three, which is the payment in lieu of, right?
So, uh, when are we going to make approvals to Julio?
It's not on the current bond program. Doesn't mean that something could change out there and that, that need to be done, but...
Wouldn't we like to encourage sidewalks along Julio since there's a school just?
Well, you could require the sidewalk to be built, yes. Short of it being, because it doesn't connect anything, would be payment in lieu of, and we put together, you know, several pieces and do the sidewalk all at one time.
There are not sidewalks anywhere out there?
Um, I think there's some sidewalks to the... Yeah, I think there's some sidewalks to the east of it that was built. See, if you go down there on the corner there, it looks like there's some...
Isn't there, uh, neighborhoods to the west of this property?
I meant, I'm sorry, I meant to the west, yes.
And is there walkways still down there?
I, that part I don't, I don't have any idea.
To me, the payment in lieu of, Jeff, is a good option because...
It is, if you know when you're gonna improve Julio. We take a lot of these payment in lieu of...
We do.
...and know when we're making improvements.
But I, I'm talking about as opposed to building the sidewalk.
But, but I'm suggesting...
That maybe we don't even, that we just need to give away it.
We need to start building sidewalks and moving it up.
Well, that's, that's the point I was gonna make. When you don't have a plan for your future street improvements, you could build a sidewalk that wasn't in the right place. You know, if you don't do it with the curb and gutter and all that stuff. I don't know, I'm, that's probably, I'm probably way out of my skis.
And if you had two or three pro- payments in lieu of a street, might make it closer to the top of go ahead and get the sidewalk built because we have more people have paid into it. I mean, we are, part of active transportation is to look at where do we need to start building sidewalks, because I agree with you, we need to start building sidewalks.
Well, I would suggest that one of the checklist for that question, where do we need sidewalks, would be, is it close to a school?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it right across the street?
Yep.
Well, that's the work we had Garber do.
Yeah, and we have some of those outlined, and some areas that can, we can start putting pieces together. Next thing to go back is to look at all these payments in lieu of that we have, and which projects have a lot more money paid into them than others. We haven't started any of that yet, but that's part of what needs to be done as we start building a sidewalk program. Ideally, if the city had their own sidewalk staff that could do construction of sidewalks, we could go build sidewalks in different areas. But we don't have a sidewalk crew.
But that's why we have this ordinance that requires sidewalks, so that...
We can get started, yes.
Get started, start the neighborhood, build the sidewalk.
Yep. I'm not gonna argue with you. I, you will not hear me recommend waivers of sidewalks very often.
Okay, why, why do you go this way?
No, I, I'm, I'm recommending they do payment in lieu of sidewalks, not build it because it'd be out in the middle of nowhere, but we start putting all these together so we can put together some comprehensive programs of building sidewalks that make sense.
Is there a sidewalk anywhere on that side?
Well, I, I don't know. I can't remember, I don't, that's not...
I can't remember, but I'm not on that stretch.
I'd have to drive out there and look at it. I could drive by it every day and not be able to tell you how much there was sidewalks.
What about a five-year sunset on the payment in lieu of?
Well, we, we took the, we took the sunset clause out of it many years ago, so we would have the ability to start moving forward with getting some of this done.
But we could put one back in, result chose.
Does the school on the property across the street?
Yes.
Is that school property?
That's school property across the street, yeah. And, and they didn't build any sidewalks.
Did Grand School away from...
Yeah, we did.
Shouldn't the school build sidewalks?
I, I'm not gonna disagree with you. If you'll remember, I recommended that the si- that the school district build sidewalks every time we do a school, but...
We were told at the time kids would not be walking.
Well, this is a middle school, isn't it? Or is this a junior high? Somebody help me.
Junior high.
So there's not as many kids that walk to junior high, they ride the bus to junior high.
Getting more houses out there, though.
Mm-hmm. We're getting more development in this whole area as, as we speak.
If you could tell me we're gonna be redoing Julio in the next five years, I'd be great with this.
Okay, if you could tell Ben he could do that in the next five years, I guarantee you he'd get it designed and ready to do it. But as we work through this active transportation and start looking at areas that need sidewalk, this is the kind of questions we need to talk about. Where are the areas that need those connections to school where we have people walking? This may or may not be one, we haven't looked at it yet. But if you look at that, and I got extra copies of that, that study in my office, if anybody wants a hard copy, that you can see some of those areas that were put together with all kinds of things.
This wasn't mentioned, was it? Or was it?
To be quite honest, I don't know, I didn't go back and look at it.
I don't remember this one, but, I mean, we got...
There was some out in that area because we're trying to get, you know, there's a, there's an elementary school, the high, Don Tyson School of Innovation is out there, there's an elementary school, there's a bunch of schools that people could be walking to. It's an area that needs sidewalks, I'm, there's no question that needs to happen.
I think we should put it on the list, I'm sure. We got, we've also got areas, schools that are 60 years old that don't have sidewalks.
Next time we have a school project coming in, remember that when they ask for a waiver of sidewalks, okay? I don't know that Dr. Cleveland will ask for another waiver of a sidewalk, 'cause I don't think he'll ask for another save...
If we can name the trail, Mike Lawson trailing line.
I knew that was coming up.
I, I don't care what you call it, as long as we get trails and sidewalks built, you know.
But we do have a motion and a second for this with the payment in lieu of. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
No.
Pow?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Bailey?
No.
Well, we're on to Plan B, I guess. Does anyone else have a motion? Is that one thing?
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second. Have it grant the waiver.
That, that's just a full granting of the waiver.
Okay.
Uh, all right, everybody got that? The motion and second is for option one. Roll call, please.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
No.
What are four, mayor?
Four of four. Well, I don't want them building the sidewalk when we don't even know where they need to put it, so I'm gonna vote for it.
Carrie Spies. Option one.
You're for option one?
Yes.
It's, it's passed, okay. Okay, the next one is the same kind of thing. It is in, am I in the right place, y'all got it? No. The next one is the waiver of street improvements along, uh, McRae for, uh, Shaver subdivision. They have no access into it, they are asking for a waiver of street improvements along, uh, McRae. Again, the Planning Commission is recommending payment in lieu of improvements.
So there's not gonna be an access off McRae into this area?
As you can see from that subdivision there, the, uh, uh, street goes down there and dead ends with a hammerhead, so they can turn around and the tension pond is what's next to McRae. But it still fronts on McRae.
So, they're just asking for a sidewalk variance?
No, they're asking to waive all of the street improvements, making no street improvements on, uh, McRae for Shaver Street. 'Cause...
But they're gonna do it on...
The ordinance would require them to do street improvements to full width of their property, but they're not accessing it. All of their access will come off of Shaver Street to the south, and they're asking to not have to do any street improvements along, uh, Shaver Street.
Is this a commercial development?
It is a commercial subdivision, yes.
It's actually a new city street going in there.
Yeah, it is a new city street.
And McRae's gonna have improvements eventually, what I understand, that we're thinking maybe widening, widening part of it, doing a roundabout, that was on the Garber.
It was, it was on the Garber list, it did not make this list for this bond, but, but I would expect, I, I sure hope McRae gets improved at some point.
The question really about McRae is when the harbor, Emma, opens up, will the traffic on McRae continue like it is now, or will people go to the other street and go across? So we, you know, we really need to kind of wait and see what happens with the traffic patterns after that goes through, too.
Well, and, and...
But it still needs...
But also what happens from McRae west of, west of, uh, 40th?
How do we tie into that?
Right.
That access street. So this, this is kind of a different one.
There's drainage issues, Rex spoke of drainage issues earlier, there's drainage issues along McRae, too.
Yeah, and if there is a drainage issue along this, it'd have to be taken care of with the project. But again, this, there, the Planning Commission's recommendation is payment in lieu of improvement, so they pay what their cost would be, we put that into the escrow account, and when we do McRae improvements, we have that money to use. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of streets, improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Shaver Edition, contact, in connection with preliminary plat 2307, a preliminary plat." And the Planning Commission's recommendation is option three, payment in lieu of.
Move the resolution to be adopted, option three. Okay, we got a motion and second to approve with option three, payment in lieu of. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero, option three.
Two?
Three.
I'm sorry.
The next one, excuse me, is a request for a wa- waiver of sidewalks in connection with a single-family dwelling being built on 3005 Valley View Drive. This is another one where the Planning Commission is recommending option three, payment in lieu of, resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Timon Arsenal in connection with 3005 Valley View Drive, a single-family dwelling.
I move the resolution pass with option one.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve with, uh, approve the waiver. Uh, any other questions or comments? Anyone in the au- in the audience? Yes, sir?
I'm, I'm the homeowner.
Okay.
If, if there's any more questions, um, I'd be glad to speak about it. I'm asking for a full variance, I'm not sure what option.
A full waiver.
Full waiver.
That's the option that is, is, that we're gonna vote on now. Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero, option one.
And the last is a waiver of street improvements along Highway 265 for Newlywed Foods. They are extending, they had a, a very industrious, um, expansion plan, and it pulled it back to only adding that small piece of additional parking because they were parking on the grass. Um, Planning Commission is recommending approval of this waiver because it's State Highway 265. Uh, the, uh, title of the ordinance reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of streets, street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Newlywed Foods in connection with master street plan improvements."
Move the resolution pass, option one.
Second. Motion and second for approval of the resolution with option one. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman? Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero, option one.
I'm gonna open up finance committee.
Okay.
Our first item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing funding for repairs, improvements to the Randall Woby railroad crossing pursuant to the addendum to a railroad crossing easement agreement with Arkansas and Missouri Railroad Company. And this was forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval. James Smith is here to speak with us if anyone has any questions.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
Do we have a timeframe?
He doesn't know how long it'll take to get the parts in. He says he has some, but not all. Any others? Okay, Denise.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
Uh, kind of follow up on Mark's question as we go to this next one, which is also another crossing. Uh, is the time, do, do we have an order? Do we know which one's coming first, or is it just gonna ma- depend on how parts come in?
Right. Randall Woby's gonna be a bigger crossing, but, uh, Shady Grove Road's gonna have drainage, so you'll have to get big box culvert in for that one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, the second item is item B, a resolution authorizing funding for repairs, improvements to the Shady Grove Railroad Crossing pursuant to an addendum, uh, to a railroad crossing easement agreement with Arkansas and Missouri Railroad Company. It's forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman? Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
The next item is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper. This was also forwarded from committee with a re- recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Other comments or questions?
Actually, I have, I have a question. But is there not a use for having more than one?
We have two.
We do have two. Okay, so we have two and we're like replacing one of those?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Denise.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes, ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Carrie's eight zero.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions for James? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Carrie's eight zero.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the payment of an invoice. Project number 18BPS12 Harbor Extension from 40th Street to Gutenbaum Road was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
The next item is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of a r- rapping truck. This was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions for James? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
The next resolution, and I'm gonna massacre some of these names, um, states a resolution authorizing the massacre and city clerk to approve a change order for additional services to Bachman, Mossup, and Michaels for graphic design coordination for donor signage. This was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. Again, presented by Ben Peters.
Can we just call them SMM so we don't have to say those names? Uh, this is for signage for the Luther George Park, this is for the donor signage and to create a cohesive signage plan, uh, for that park.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Other comments or questions? Okay, Denise.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, thank you, Amelia. I will turn, uh, I think the rest of our items over to our city attorney.
I think she's got one more.
Oh, do you have one more? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, last item is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire portions of land from the Michael Coleman Family Trust for the Hilton Road Improvement Project, project number ST2206, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. This is presented by Ernest Cass, the city attorney.
I was half right.
Yep, you were. Thank you, uh, this is the, uh, if you remember, we entered into a development agreement with, uh, some developers on Hilton Road to improve Hilton Road south of Don Tyson Parkway. This is part of that project, and it's one of the, uh, parcels, uh, we're needing to acquire for right of way, but it, it, uh, increases the amount of compensation from $10,500 to $13,000. And this is the last parcel we need to get started, because we've got orders possession on the other ones.
That's, that's correct.
And this comes out of the, uh, not to exceed amount that's been previously approved, uh, contribution towards the project.
Move the resolution pass.
Second. All right, motion and second. Any other questions? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero. And that closes finance.
All right. Now, our city attorney?
The last three are me, and all three of these resolutions are doing the same thing, setting a public hearing for September the 12th, uh, on a petition to, the first one is, uh, a resolution setting a hearing date and petition to vacate a portion of a platted alley. And the map of the, uh, alley, part of it's already been vacated, just with the vacate the remainder, but before we can take it up, the statute requires us to schedule a public hearing for the city clerk to publish notice. So that's the purpose of this resolution.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the resolution. Other comments, questions, concerns? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero. And the last one is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon portions of utilities in the city of Springville, Washington County, Arkansas. This is on, uh, property owned by the school district, is basically just making officials for relocation of some utility easements at the high, Springville High School property. It would schedule a public hearing on that as well, for September 12th.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Did we get a second? Okay. All right, anyone need to speak to it? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, thank you, Amelia. I will turn, uh, I think the rest of our items over to our city attorney.
I think she's got one more.
Oh, do you have one more? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, last item is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire portions of land from the Michael Coleman Family Trust for the Hilton Road Improvement Project, project number ST2206, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. This is presented by Ernest Cass, the city attorney.
I was half right.
Yep, you were. Thank you, uh, this is the, uh, if you remember, we entered into a development agreement with, uh, some developers on Hilton Road to improve Hilton Road south of Don Tyson Parkway. This is part of that project, and it's one of the, uh, parcels, uh, we're needing to acquire for right of way, but it, it, uh, increases the amount of compensation from $10,500 to $13,000. And this is the last parcel we need to get started, because we've got orders possession on the other ones.
That's, that's correct.
And this comes out of the, uh, not to exceed amount that's been previously approved, uh, contribution towards the project.
Move the resolution pass.
All right, motion and second. Any other questions? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero. And the last one is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon portions of utilities in the city of Springville, Washington County, Arkansas. This is on, uh, property owned by the school district, is basically just making officials for relocation of some utility easements at the high, Springville High School property. It would schedule a public hearing on that as well, for September 12th.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Did we get a second? Okay. All right, anyone need to speak to it?